...uh, three, six, and nine, and Chattanooga, Chicago. However you want to do it. So we do thirty days of warning citations. We do two weeks of media blast or four weeks, however you guys want. We want everybody to slow down. That's, that's the point of it. Slowing down is a lot. So, right now, in the state of Georgia, since school has started back, we have cut speeding down at all the facilities that we have. Ninety-four point nine percent in, you know, the city of Savannah, South Fulton, all the outline areas. U-Harley, we cut U-Harley speeding down, uh, at thirty-five hundred violations in a five-day period. Once we did public information, education, thirty days of warning, uh, that number dropped. Would've been about fourteen thousand for the month, dropped to about six hundred, six hundred and some odd. So that's a successful program. That's what we want to do. We want to slow people down. So that being said, the state of Georgia has written a law. It's forty-fourteen dash eighteen that is specific to utilizing automated school zone enforcement. Says you can run it out before school. The hometown schools in section hour, so from seven-thirty in the morning to four in the afternoon. But it knows when to switch the times when it's forty-five miles an hour, um, or thirty-five. So we do that. The state says you have to flash a light, right? And you have to have a sign that says radar, or photo enforced. We go step above me on that and put radar feedback signs and ease into the school zone. So you have three warnings before you drive into the school zone, before you drive through the laser. And you still have between three and six hundred feet, however, whoever from GDOT, they declare the, the link in the school zone. So you got three warnings and you still have between three and six hundred feet before you drive through the laser beam, before it contacts you possibly. When that being said, there'll be on the citation, there'll be a red, a red color, it'll be a square or a circle, shows this was your car. Doesn't take picture of anybody in the car.
Okay, so it's, so we'd like to take a picture?
Of the, of the rear end of the vehicle, yes.
And then send it out? You send it in the mail or whatever?
Well, what we do, yes, but the police department has full control of that. So we run it, we run it, and it comes back to us. It doesn't come back to the next, we, it comes back automatically, but we don't look after the next day. You may have a water lane bus at school, and everybody gets out at twelve o'clock and wouldn't be fair enough. You may have a snow day. Something that we don't know about, and we would be contacted. So you can spoil it. So there's a ticket never been written, right? It's just the, the, the image is there. We can, we, instead of saying, okay, well, who got out at twelve? So you can spoil that.
It's kind of like what they do in Chattanooga when you park in our own place or something. Send you a picture with a little ticket.
Yeah, I'm not aware with, with the parking stuff. We, I'll just do it in school. But with the, and then the police chief or whoever he designates, after we run the tag and get the registration, then we send it over to the police department, and they look to make sure everything's right. Then it comes back to us, and then we mail it out. Yes, sir.
No, I'll take it.
Yes, sir. What's the figures on the tickets? It's very biggies. Uh, it's a hundred dollars for the first offense and one fifty for the second offense.
What percentage do you guys get?
Thirty-five. You guys get sixty-five. And you guys will never be involved for anything, and it's totally free. The only thing, if you guys, if we can't use solar and there's electric, uh, we're gonna put down there. They say it's about the cost of the street light. You'd be responsible paying for the electricity, that'll be it. So after the, you mail the citation out, they have sixty days to pay the citation. If they don't pay it within sixty days, we send out a second notice. They now have thirty days.
They send you the money?
Yes.
What's the turnaround?
That, it, that's what I'm saying. If they don't pay it in sixty days, then we send out another notice. If they don't pay it within the ninety day, the state law is written where we send their information to GDOT, Department of Revenue, and they will put a lien on their license plate or on their title until they pay the citation. It's totally a civil violation. There's no criminal process to this. So if we get a batch of tickets, about fifteenth of every month, you guys will get a revenue report and a check for what's been collected from that part.
Why, what is it behind the, uh, speeding in the school zone out here?
It's a, it's a hundred write-off. For the first offense and a hundred fifty on the second is what they're gonna take any's.
And what do we do now?
By law, I don't know what the, how much choice is in charge. The bins on the miles per hour. Yeah. On the, uh, let's say, you know, we got a lot of first responders that they're, you know, not having uniforms. Let's say they get a fire call, you know, this is a building school zone. And they go through there, you know, ten, twelve, fifteen miles an hour. If the citizen's working, it's gonna issue them a citation, because they're gonna be in their personal vehicle, right? But our chief, or whoever's signed, can go into the thing and say, alright, this guy's a first responder.
He can spoil, yes, sir. Yes, yes, you have, we, we will take out any analysis or spy culture police cars on the mercy of Chattanooga. But that's what, we don't want to take a human down on our lot. So if that were to happen, and they know Mr. Smith is a volunteer fireman, and they had a fire just now, it's not even written. It, it can be spoiled. Yes, sir.
I would cover police cars.
And anybody in our surrounding area, did you say?
Yes, Ringgold has it. Uh, Salty Daisy just passed it. Uh, U-Harley has it. Fairmount, Baldwin, Toccoa, I was over there this morning to get contracted with them. South Fulton, uh, they have eighteen schools. We have Temple, Bel Airico, I went to, uh, where I work with them.
How long's it been in Ringgold?
We, it got, it put up this summer. They're, they're right now, got all the permitting and everything ready, and they're doing the warning phase, started right.
So for a month, y'all will warn everybody?
For thirty days, yes, sir. You'll get a ticket.
The males are warning.
This is a warning. Yes, sir. But we will, we want everybody to slow before we can get a warning, you know?
And it's free?
It's free, yes, sir.
And how long is commitment to, for the city?
We ask for a two-year commitment, so we can make everybody. It costs us seventy-five thousand dollars to put that up.
But it's free to us?
It's free to you guys.
Sounds a lot like we give us them officers.
Oh, oh my God.
That new truck city's getting a little out of hand.
They were.
Does everybody go home?
Oh, yeah.
But what that, well, we'll have them, or should have, no. You know, right now, we, we got officers working in the school zone, of course, to get the buses in and out and all that stuff. So during the times he's talking about, we're, we don't have an officer sent over. We're directing the school buses. So this will help solve that and hopefully protect all our children, we not over.
It, it will change the, the driving behavior. I know when, uh, South Fulton, of course, that was a newer, uh, municipality that come in, that went in, in Fulton County, and they formed a police department, and, and they called us, because they had a little girl, unfortunately, that was killed in the school zone, she was in the same town, well. But we did eighteen of their school zones down there, all eighteen of their school zones. And they cut the traffic down, uh, right off the bat after the first thirty to sixty days, we cut the traffic down going through the school zones. About twenty-five thousand less cars a month go through the school zones.
But now you're talking about the high school here, right?
This is right.
Because we feel like they're the ones that speeding the most or something else.
Well, it's on a, it's on a state highway. It's the state law that's off the state highway. Our other schools entrances, middle school and elementary, are off city streets. It's the state law that allows them. We talked about doing this for, like Chattanooga used to do, Tennessee would allow it, and if you go through a section and you're over thirty-five and you're at forty-five, they take you, same amount, a big one, pour a lot of people out, but we couldn't do that in Georgia, what I understand.
Because it, well, it's the Tennessee law, or it's, is a little different, because it has to be in an S curve.
Yeah.
And then it determines what is an S curve. So, but Georgia's specific to school zone.
And then our current tag reader system that's on our cars has a, too, that would do it, but we cannot, like, if we wanted to put it coming off. To me, one of the worst areas we got is from McCade Road all the way to the main red light, because there's only one speed limit sign between there and come off that hill by the gas stations and McDonald's, and how many times have you, I've heard squilling tires there, people trying to turn left, but thought about trying to put something there years ago, slow down.
And I would maybe get that parade commission for my ticket, though. On the day.
The, with the list of roads and stuff, it, it has, in, in Georgia, you guys have a list of roads, and that's what we kept up to GDOT. And you guys decide to pass this, then we'll have to take your list up. We do all the permitting, everything. We take the headache off you guys, and we would have that. One of the caveats to the state law is you have to show that that has automated school zone enforcement, of course, we would have to take care of all the permitting. The permitting is what takes the longest. We can put the infrastructure up in a day or a day and a half. It's the permitting with GDOT, that's what.
So. They have to be insured nonetheless with GDOT to even put them in.
So if, if we get the, okay, then how long would it be before you implement the program?
Okay. What's this one? We may could have it up in the spring, maybe. Just depends on GDOT. It depends upon GDOT. Alright. We just got one up, and it's been twenty-six months. And to Blue Falls, because.
It's probably still waiting on that crosswalk for the, between the park and New Trailers, the government plan.
It, it's not us. We, but we, you know, we gotta cross over things and not all our eyes. It's a process. It's kind of like a marathon, I mean, there's, there's processes to everything.
Is it this spring?
Maybe. I, I couldn't promise that. And, and another thing, I'm glad you brought that up, Mayor Case, each one of these cameras is a tag reader also that's free to the city. It's not gonna cost you guys anything. You'll have all the, uh, information on that. So if the cars that come through there from Lafayette coming in here from wherever, Alabama, it, it comes through there and it, there's stolen car or whatever.
How quick does it get the information back to the PD?
It's, it's instantaneous. If it's in there, now, uh, every twelve hours, we'll see how it does the push, four thirty, four thirty. But if Jason Lafayette, uh, the chief of, Larry Jason Stedman, if, if one of his guys something happened there and he put it in, and you guys run the same system, or even in Savannah, Georgia, if, if, well, Chief Minter, he just retired, but if, say, Jennifer Jones, the chief at Ringgold, when she puts something in and that, that accident came through here, it would.
Does it alert the chief and the, when it's happening or coming through? Or how?
If it, if it, if it came through, if they put it in the, the list, then when it come through this camera, it would notify on your cell phone, if that one was an accident. And that's free to you guys.
So after the twenty-four month agreement, we decided we didn't like it or whatever, just said, that's it?
Yeah, but we, we just have to get our money back. We, we want to do it right, with their, and, and nobody's going to say, come and get it, because it does change the, the driving behavior of people. They're more cautious. When you see your speed is, this is photo enforced, this is, you know, I better slow down. So it, it does, you know, it's, it's a great tool. And I'm really excited by ninety-four percent, ninety-four point nine percent of the share. I think that's, that's really good.
Ticket readers have been paid off that much?
It helps the guys find stuff quick. Yes, it's amazing technology, it's getting better.
And this will be two more set of eyes for you guys, too.
Well, we met today, and I liked what you had to say, so I want y'all to, want y'all here, friendly with that mate. It's, uh, it's just another safety feature. We initiated our school system without having to spend no money.
Well, no spot of value, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Monday, Tuesday, twenty-three thousand nine hundred eighty-one vehicles passed east and west, or just?
Yes, yes, both directions, yes, sir.
In front of the high school.
And let me say something with that, too, that we put a radar box up.
Yeah.
So if there was something coming, that's not a hundred percent accurate, because there couldn't be something that's not laser. That's just to give us a baseline of where to go. Yes, sir.
A lot of traffic, I bet it's that or more on the other side, the west side. You also mentioned what we were talking about, the, by the way, you all said the actual speed number goes down once the equipment is stopped.
Yes, sir.
So we looked at about fifty percent or sixty percent?
Fifty percent, well, about ninety percent.
No, it's, it's, it's really about ninety percent.
So basically, we're gonna be ninety percent safer in our school zone, our children.
Yes, sir. I mean, that's, and, and, you know, we're partner, we, we, we're partnered with GACP to, and, you know, I was at the new chief's meeting, and, and it's all about safety, and that's what we, we want. So that's what we want to show them, we're, we're in it, so. I don't feel like I'm working, but I'm out there tossing and that, but, you know, when you enjoy something, your passion about it, it's not work. And get the help, keep you guys out, too. Because I, I know, I mean, I was right over by a car in ninety-six, and it was on direct traffic, as big as I, didn't hurt me, but it's sure pretty scary.
Don't cost us anything. Wasn't a slow-mo man like you say for, or we don't pull it much around anymore?
Get away. It's gonna get away, yeah. It's gonna definitely make the school zone a safer place to drive.
Yeah, I'm saying, you know how those kids are.
Yeah, we still, like, you know, that's one of the things we asked for on that state grant that we went in forward, is the sidewalks, you know, that me and you work on. We had those quick things for the cities under five thousand sidewalks to middle school and high school. Just to be one more step to help do that, what does happen. There are some walking from Edgewood and Glenbroke, and you see the little wet feet now, walking the path when they're walking.
And, you know, when you got a red light somewhere like that, I was shocked that the number was still over six hundred with a red light.
It's all over, I guarantee it's all over. They're all guilty of running over. I catch myself all the time, trying to be that better person, but it, you know, I think we all do that, or all the time. Well, I think most drivers, they realize, if they're, if they're doing that most, and they should, they should realize that.
Yeah.
So you get something in the mail, we're not like next time.
Yeah, that's, that's just some cost we might.
We, you know, we want to warn everybody first, and so, I want to, educate the kids, and we got flyers, we can send, oh, you guys have a water service through the city, or electric service, we can send you home that way. We can also send stuff. We want to make sure the bus drivers know about it. We want to make sure everybody knows about it. PTA, whatever we need to say.
It would be hard to get it out?
No. I'd like to say that number would be zero speeders, but, you know. And then when it's summertime, it goes off and back when schools in.
Yes, sir, it goes off, but your tag reader is still working also.
Good.
Oh, so it goes off?
It's only available during school time, school years, but the readers will be available.
The readers will be on there off, before seven.
The enforcement's during school times only.
Oh, okay.
So it started at seven-thirty in the morning, and somebody doing forty-six, he would give a ride citation, and then, what time does it go off about that?
Four.
Now, what, what time's it go off in the morning? Uh, it's the seven, the first block, seven thirty?
Seven thirty, eight thirty.
Okay, at eight thirty-one, it gives a one-minute buffer. If you're doing fifty-six, it would ride at that. They put that law in there, and then in the afternoon, it knows when there'd be a one-minute buffer, and it would go back to riding at forty-six, or yeah. They put that law in there because you're still having field trips, you're still having people in and out of school, there's playgrounds, there's still kids walking. So it's to keep them safe the whole day that they're going to school. But you're also, you're switching speed, like I said, and our technology's low, and they're, they're pre-programmed to do that.
Yeah, I guess one more question now, shut up. But during our football meetings, we have, it's busy up there. There's no way to pre-program for football meetings or like that.
Can I have given officers over there?
They went down a bus, it's directed, so.
I mean, you can't, you can't do it there. In Tennessee, they can't, because there's no, there's a law or anything like that.
That's seven hundred and sixty cars an hour, car, cars an hour running through that area.
That's unfair.
Yeah, that's not carrying your weight.
Sixty cars an hour going east and west, on one thirty-six. That's what, just besides the traffic, I mean, they're seeing, we've got a lot of traffic here.
And, and I'm sure if that was later, a zone in front of a bike cap, there, that.
That would be nice.
For a middle school.
Yeah. That could be a real complicated one going out there.
Not if you, if you request, if it's in, if it's in, the, the way the law reads, if it's in within one thousand feet of a school property, you can make it a school zone.
Did you and Steve, you're all gonna check better?
Yeah. I got the results for that. There was over six thousand violations. There was thirty-eight thousand cars come through there and six thousand violations. It's ten times higher than that, or a hundred times, ten times.
So it'd be feasible for us to put one over there, too?
That, that would be up to you guys, yes. Uh, the permitting, our department would, would have to go for it. If it, the, the one deal, though, it's got to be within one thousand feet of the school zone, if the property of the school.
It's built on, it's down to the drainage ditch goes out into the creek.
Right. So like in Savannah, because Savannah's a little bit bigger, there's some of those we got all, around all four sides of the school, because it's so breezy and hectic.
It's only six hundred foot.
Is it about five hundred, about keep number?
Yeah, it's about five hundred and something foot. Six hundred foot to the, from the edge of the park, parking lot up to the, I think it's, it's.
There was, there was right at six thousand, six thousand dollars.
What was the distance, Ken, sir?
Roughly, it's right around five hundred, it's about a bit off the map, because of property lines, but I don't know if I can see.
I've got that, you. That was the middle school?
Yes, sir.
I said that for a while, too. Yeah, through there, I use the same time, seven thirty, eight thirty, uh, three to four. So there was a total five-day count of thirty-five thousand seven hundred and sixty-eight cars, six thousand and twenty violations. With that one, you had thirty-three hundred and thirty-seven going between eleven and fourteen over, twenty-two hundred and sixty-one going fifteen to twenty over, and four hundred and twenty-two going at least twenty-one miles an hour over.
Twenty-one miles an hour.
Yes, sir. Um, in the morning time, there was thirty-seven hundred cars, eleven hundred and seventy-three speakers, which is thirty-one and a half percent. Through the day, there was twenty-six thousand eighty-eight cars and one thousand three hundred seventy-two violations. This is what's, is the scary part. In the afternoon, we had five thousand nine hundred and fifty-three cars over a five-day period. Three thousand four hundred and seventy-five were doing at least eleven over, which for your five-day, each day was in the fifty percent, but the five-day range was fifty-eight point four percent of those cars were speeding.
Now, if, uh, just say someone tries to dispute the ticket, how, what's the process for that?
They dispute it. They, they have to dispute it in the first sixty days.
But I mean, like?
Yeah, they would go, it was, it's no different than.
They wouldn't come, like, they, it wouldn't come to our city court?
Yeah. Yeah, it's no different than, uh, Mr. Mike here, driving my car over there to Ingles and parking in the handicap zone. He would want in there to get him something to eat. Chief comes by, runs my tag over, puts the ticket on there, and I'm like, hey, man, I was at the house, you know? Mike was driving my car, I'm just walking to my car. It's a civil violation, it's no different than, uh, the handicap ticket.
Yeah, but I was just getting to the point of, uh, so, so it would go for our city court?
Yeah, but we got you covered. We have a court manager who's a paralegal, so if somebody, if somebody calls and says, hey, I, I got this violation, okay, it's Trent, I'm like, okay. My grandpa's driving, whatever. They'd be like, okay. So they would, uh, coordinate with her and get a court date from her, and they would set it up, and then the first appearance, first time you guys did, to make sure everything's right, we would come, we would have our court liaison come to court with her and go over the process. And if the judge either finds you responsible or not responsible, so we just need, and then if somebody does after the first time and they found responsible, and you guys have a court cost, whatever it may be, that's your court cost, right? So you guys would charge the court cost, we would still, she would let our people know that, hey, Casey number so-and-so, so-and-so is responsible, that you need to collect a fine, and we would go about it that way. So we, we try to make it as easy. All those bin police before, we know, we, we want to make it easier on you guys, too.
Yeah, we're just hoping for, for court.
And it runs smoothly, and it runs smoothly.
Okay. Let's go if you catch on.
We try to think of everything. Any questions for anybody?
Appreciate you presenting.
Thank you guys for having me, I appreciate it.
All right, does anybody need to take a break? I'll go straight to the meeting. All right. Go ahead and stand, we'll have, uh, Mr. Fred. Dear Father, we thank you for the stay and thank you for the blessings of this city and these commissioners and employees, our taxpayers, and our visitors and all, for this city to live in. Be with us tonight as we discuss this business of our city and move forward in the future of this city, and, uh, combines and understanding in your precious name. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands, one nation, under God, and indivisible, with the great goodness of our God. Thank you. Everyone, to the two, the address to register, good meeting, which takes place in San Juan de San Juan, of the, to the state, this is actually our third meeting. It's time to do a roll call. Mr. Powell.
Here.
Mr. Williams.
I'm here.
Mr. Norris.
Here.
Mr. House. We have a forum to conduct business, and we'll start with the park records, reports, and now the commissioner Norris, please.
Let her know that it turned to that page already. The Trent Police Department answered eighteen hundred and eighty calls for service during the month of September, conducted fourteen hundred and ninety-eight business checks, answered four animal complaints, responded to five domestic disturbance calls, five trespassing calls, twenty-two suspicious persons or activity calls, worked nineteen traffic accidents, one hundred, one hundred and thirty-one traffic stops, which resulted in a total of sixty-five citations to be issued. Citations issued for safety violations are speeding twenty-two, driver's license violations seven, due for registration is twelve, DUI is nine, no insurance, eight, disorder conduct two, fair to yield two, seat belts two, unlawful use of the wireless device, seven, fair to maintain lane, five, and open container, three. That was for September.
All right, thank you, Commissioner. Parks and Rec, Animal Control, Commissioner Norris, Commissioner Powell.
All right, the community center was rented eighty-three hours last month. Animal control had fourteen animal control work orders, or complaints, one. One county dog bite. Uh, the recreation park, uh, ball fields, middle school softball has finished up. And the mural painting has been finished on the scout gun, it really looks good. I'd like to thank Ms. Blair for the work she's done on that, and appreciate it. It helps the entrance to the park. Also, I want to take a minute to thank, uh, Monda for stepping in our way to help with animal control problems we have, she is now working with, uh, to help pick up some animals and.
No, I'm volunteering, I'm not working.
She, but she's, she's, uh, she's spent a long, long time doing this, I just want to.
Well, I think another thing for Jennifer, I noticed prom and Hoka, a bunch of dances.
I do too.
There's been a lot of pictures in front of the mural, so we're getting a lot of people to come through the thing, so it was very wonderful to see this weekend with a lot of the dresses and stuff, so it was amazing. Great to see that place being used, awesome. All right. Fire and Utilities, Commissioner House.
The Sewer Department had thirty five underground locates, five emergency locates, nine sewer calls, one sewer tap, and one sewer tap inspection. Uh, okay. And the ferry department had, um, two remodels, two property reviews, and four new constructions. They had five electrical and HVAC plumbing inspections, and they did a final courtesy fire inspection for the Trenton Golf Club. The fire department had, um, total calls for two thousand twenty two so far. They had eight fire related, three accidents, seven medical, nineteen standby, and they were dispatched and canceled and routed to fifty two, which was a total of eighty nine. And that's it.
All right, thank you.
And that's not a total of twenty two, I.
Yeah, that's just for the last month.
It's just the month, yeah. By the time that came out of my mouth, I realized what I said, but that's what's on here. That was all twenty two.
Twenty two. All right, Street Park, Commissioner.
We had forty five work orders, and I think we're getting less orders, work orders, because, um, the guys really have a schedule that they stick to and, um, like the brush, people have pretty much gotten accustomed to picking up brush on Thursdays. And so that's what most of our work orders were.
I've had some compliments on that too, about, you know, we don't have to call anymore, they're just coming on certain days.
Well, if you're down a little route then. So, yeah, they've gotten accustomed to it.
Well, we like for them to call in case we miss a route, it's not there, it's not.
Well, yeah, but, yeah, but. It's not like it used to be, is what I'm saying.
Well, what's good about our work order system, we can tell how much it's costing us by the equipment to mend, and how long, and that's what's good to get accustomed to that when we get into disaster, we can help recover costs.
And we, uh, we have finally fixed a place down at the old sewer plant where we can pile up brush, that's how, that's been a, that's been an ongoing problem for us, for close to put that. And so that's good that we can, we're just kind of being other people's mercy, less done it, so now we can, we're in control of that, so that's good. Um, we put our flags up for Labor Day and our, our mowing routines. Um, and we, we did get a gator in, you know, from the, uh, from the bird graveyard that they put on the side, so it was a pretty big gator in. We didn't make it, we were gonna get it till like February or March, but, um, but they called and said they actually had one come in, or from another dealership or something, and the bank had to ship it here, so we had that in the real plan. And Jennifer, I want to thank you, I think that's beautiful that made it. And I know it's, it's, sometimes, I know you got kind of disheartened and discouraged sometimes when you deal with the government, I mean, the wheels turn slow, and you gotta nod every eye, cross every p, and I know it got discouraging, but you hung in there, and I'm so glad you did, and it, and it's really a great addition to the, to the city, I feel like.
All right, thank you. Uh, now, you know, announcements, and again, we're having, uh, again, we've been busy, and I appreciate a lot of the work as we've seen in our prior meetings, working with our budget and look at our mileage, we've spent a lot of time in here on that, uh, the twenty seventh of September, the work map, we appreciate every department head and, Commissioner, and, um, working with us on that, and moving forward to present, again, this Thursday, the twentieth, at ten thirty AM, we'll have our first public hearing. Then at four, again, at four PM that afternoon. You wanna kind of look at what we're doing and what's gonna be presented. Uh, and then again, we're at our final notice going out, uh, that went out, this should be in the paper tomorrow, I mean, Wednesday, again, for the twenty seventh, that meeting will be at six PM. And then we will meet immediately after that at six thirty to approve the budget and minutes.
So it's Thursday at ten and Thursday at four?
Yes, two, two, two public hearings this Thursday, the twentieth. And then the twenty seventh, six PM, and our scheduled meeting immediately after that. All right, we'll step in with financials, uh, general fund balance ending August, thirty first, twenty two is one million, sixty six thousand, six hundred and seventy nine dollars and twenty nine cents. Revenue for the month of August was five hundred and twenty three thousand, seventy eight dollars and eighty cents. Total expenses for the month of August is five hundred and twenty seven thousand, six hundred and thirty dollars and sixty four cents. Year to date, uh, for eight full months of January through August is one million, six hundred and twenty nine dollars, one hundred and thirty seven, six hundred and twenty nine thousand, one hundred and thirty seven dollars and eighty two cents. Total expenses for the year to date is one million, six hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and forty four dollars and seventy eight cents. So we are a little under of revenue, that's why we like to put it around on the tax. Sewer, uh, financials for the month of August, uh, current balance, checking account reconciliation follows, one hundred and eleven thousand, eight hundred and ninety six dollars and twenty two cents. Uh, charge for services, uh, did get put in, but this will get in time. Total expenses for the month of, uh, August was twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy two dollars and twenty one cents. A lot of times our checks come in late, but it's a good thing. Uh, hotel motel funds, one hundred and twenty seven thousand, four hundred and ten dollars and eighty cents in reconciliation follows. Street Police Department seizure funds, twenty four hundred and eighty four dol, two thousand four hundred and eighty four dollars and eighty cents reconciliation follows. Trenton Fire Department, excuse me, our fund is still currently at four hundred, two thousand, fifty nine dollars and eighteen cents. Trenton Fire Department fund is one thousand, four hundred and forty eight dollars and eighty nine cents. Two thousand fifteen bonds, sixty thousand, nine hundred and thirty five dollars and eighty cents in our current. Twenty one splash is two hundred and seventy five dollars, two hundred and seventy five thousand, three hundred and seventy eight dollars and eighty cents. This time that'd be my reporting, financials as needed, needed motion to defer to financials that was given out earlier last week in the red light.
I like the question.
Motion by Commissioner Wood.
I'll say it.
Second by Commissioner Powell, in discussion. All papers say aye. We oppose on the perias. This time, I'm Seamus Eloise Gans, uh, we'll start with Mrs. Edie House, there's ten in the club.
Hi, thank you so much for having me. Um, the first thing to report is we've hired, at the library, we have hired, um, our new youth education coordinator, and she will start next week, she's gonna train in, um, Letha on, uh, Tuesday and Wednesday, and then she'll be with us starting on Thursday. She's a graduate of the University of Georgia, uh, she's been working at the Catusa County Library, County Library for the last year, and she, I think, relocated to Trenton this past weekend, she finally got moved in this past weekend, so we are very excited to have, um, Ms. Samantha Ward come join us at the library. We are still looking for our lead circulation, uh, library assistant, we have another round of interviews this week, and we're hoping to get someone hired by the end of this week to fill that other very large position at the library. Uh, one thing that we noticed this past month, we had our internet at the library go down for two days. It was a problem with the telephone company and the IP address, and what we noticed more than anything was the services that we provide to the community members of, uh, Dade County and Trenton, and how important the library is for internet and computer services, and we had a lot of people that were very patient with us as we were trying to get that fixed and navigated, but as someone who was having to turn people away for the moment, and we realized that for a lot of people, we are the only resource that provides that, and, um, just really thankful that we can, we were up and running after, after two days, but, um, just really glad that the library can be a place that people have free internet access and free computer access, and able to print documents and things like that. While we've been, um, you know, out the youth education coordinator, we still kept all of our programming, our basic programming for, um, children's, teens, adults, and our all ages, we've also scheduled, um, two school visits from, um, the, one from the Dade County High School Special Needs Class, and another from the Dade Middle, they're, they're gonna be coming the last week of October to do a library visit, and we're really excited, I know I mentioned the play cards that we were working really hard to have happen right at the end of the school year, every student in Dade County Public Schools automatically have a Georgia play card, library card, which gives them, it's all based on their lunch number, and when kids come in and, uh, we say, do you know your lunch number, and they know their lunch number, we can look them up right there, they don't have to have a physical card, it's a fines free card, which means that if you're overdue a few days, you don't get charged anything on the items that you, um, check out with that fines card. And we had a grandma come in the other day, and she's like, oh, I think we have some fines. Um, and I looked her up, and they were all play cards, and I was like, you know what they, those were play cards and they're fines free, so she was really excited and happy about that. We've had a few guest readers come read, uh, for our Ready Re program while we're in our interim with our former YAC, Youth Education Coordinator, leaving in our new one. We had a local author, Holt Webb, come, and he read his book along with a few others that were inspirational to him as he became a children's writer, and, um, he's rattling off a few copies of his book and a T-shirt, and that was really exciting, and then we're gonna have Andy Porter come this week, and he does these large scale coloring pages for the kids to color in. Something else exciting that we're gonna have this month, we have a local amateur photographer that's going to have, we're gonna have a photography exhibit in the meeting room at the library, it's nature and landscape photography, and that's gonna be on October twenty seventh at five thirty, so please come by if you wanna see some of, um, Ralph Genet's photography work, his daughter is promoting that and putting that on for him, so we think that's gonna be really special. Another interesting thing that we had, we had a travel, a fellow come in, he teaches dance lessons. Um, he does like private dance lessons, and one of our patrons wanted a dance lesson from him, and he comes and he hang lights. And anyway, he was making a trip to this area, and they came and they used our meeting room for a couple dance lessons the other day, so I thought that was kind of an exciting use of the library space. We will also be participating in the Trick or Treat Alley, um, Saturday, the twenty ninth, from five thirty to seven thirty, so we have some books to give away, some candy to give away, and some, the, the theme is Monsters Inc. this year, so we have some cute little monsters temporary tattoos for the kids that wanna come by the library for that. And we have another trails, uh, Discover Trails program that's coming up this next week, October twenty second is gonna be the guided hike, it's on a Saturday, you'll meet us at the trailhead, the Five Points Trailhead, this is basically a series that I wanted to promote and introduce the, um, the Cloudlin Canyon Connector Trails, that basically link the Cloudlin Canyon State Park over to Little, the Little Lake Land Trust, and it's fourteen and a half miles of continuous trails, but each trailhead has some extra trails along the side, and we're gonna be meeting at the Five Points Trailhead, which is right off of one fifty seven, um, to do a one point seven five mile guided hike by one of the naturalists from Cloudlin Canyon, so we hope people can join us for that on Saturday, October twenty second. And that's all we got.
All right, thank you, Ms. Edie.
You are welcome.
Uh, Ms. Jane Dix, no, I'm sorry.
Help, just one second, would you all help me please? Um, put your hand in the top two pages, if everybody wanted, gets those, get everybody one of those on the wall. They get two, you go, uh, if you praise them, they'll do anything. They, they good. While he's giving those out, I'll give you some facts just a minute, uh, as of now, we have a hundred and six investors, and I will keep you posted on that because we are expecting that to take a significant increase, okay? Uh, and this past week, uh, two weeks ago, we had what was called the Job Ready Event. Uh, there were people who got employed on that day, that was a hiring event, it was September twenty fourth, and even though there were only fourteen companies that came, there were thirty five job seekers who walked in, and some of them went home with a job, so we were real proud of that. Um, we are also changing out the signs, you will be seeing those coming up pretty soon, um, having new road signs and visitor welcome center location signs. So if you will look at the page with the graph on it, if you'll notice, uh, this past September, we had, uh, nineteen people, Dade residents, who came to the Welcome Center. We had twenty visitors who were not residents, and we had twenty four phone calls. So if you look at it across the, the picture from the left to the right, you'll notice that it was not the highest month for sure, but it is not the lowest month either, so, uh, we're really hoping that as these leaves start to change and the weather gets going, we will have a lot more people. Uh, as the prettier Cloudlin Canyon gets, the more tourist traction we are to people, so people say, well, we're just gonna go somewhere and see the leaves, people in Chattanooga, a lot of folks I know there, they say, well, where should we go? I said, just drive right down to this eleven, and go right up one thirty six, you can stand in one of the most beautiful places in the world if you stand right up at the top of Cloudlin Canyon and look out. So we're real proud of, uh, Dade County and trying to really bring people to here to enjoy it and come back year after year as a place that they learn and they develop memories for their families. Uh, if you look at the next handout you have, it's, uh, upcoming events. Um, the first one is for Fright Night. Fright Night is an after hours event, it will be held at the Southeast Lineman Trading Center. It will be Thursday, October twenty seventh, five thirty to seven. Now, this is like our lunch and learn, but it's an evening event, and the fright will be, we have three speakers, uh, Nathan Wood, um, I can think of them, uh, the second one is, uh, uh, oh, uh, Nadine Wood, and, um, I don't remember the rest, the other one right this minute, but they will be talking about the pandemic, and were they, during the pandemic, what happened to them? Not their physical stuff, but their business, what happened to their businesses in our community, so it ought to be a real interesting night for you to come and hear, what did they go through, we, you all know what happened here, so, but a lot of businesses, uh, don't have the same story. So we hope that you will be able to come to that, enjoy it, just call the Welcome Center and register is all you need to do. The Dade Expo Jolly Holidays, uh, that is on Saturday, after Thanksgiving, you noticed there, the twenty sixth, if any of you all would like to be exhibitors, and Terry, you need to best make sure and bring your wife again, that's an event she enjoys. Uh, she spent some of your dusty money, so bring her on back this time, okay? We're wanting people to purchase from our Dade County residents, and we have a lot of people in this county who have good ideas and who are making items that will be for sale. Now, if you look on down, Light Up Trenton, you know that we are delighted that Ms., uh, uh, Monda Wood has suggested that possibly we would have some additional Christmas lights, that would be wonderful. If we had some things up above that people drove through, this year we're doing something very special with Light Up Trenton, if you'll look at that little hat sheet you got, it tells you that we will be looking for two things, lights and windows. The windows around, particularly around the square and around, like where Monda's businesses are coming up through that way, they have big front windows. We want the merchants to contract in a way, uh, just do business with the little girl, I told you last time, Kelly, no, Keely, Keely Ford. you last time, Kelly, no, Keely, Keely Fordle, she is a local artist, and she paints the windows, you've seen a lot of them, particularly like at Sundog, she does that whole strip there now at Sundog, and she is going to be doing all the Christmas windows. The merchants will call her directly, she will negotiate with them. If you are an investor, like for Ms. Wood, we will pay seventy dollars to Keely for your windows. Now, you may buy two-hundred-dollar worth, that's fine, but we will pay at least seventy dollars. Some of our investors have one window, we will pay for their one window if they're an investor. People who are not investors, we will not be paying for, Keely will negotiate just with them. So it is a great idea, and someone who wants to help with adding and subtracting, if you are not an investor and you join the Alliance for a hundred and fifty dollars if you're a small business, and then we pay seventy dollars for your windows, you just won, okay? So we're really pushing to help people to see that they can save money here and decorate. We're gonna encourage children and their parents to walk along and see, Mona's got about eight windows down through there, and Keely could do an entire story line just with Mona's windows. I don't know what it might be, if you look on the back up, there's scads of ideas, or if you look over by State Farm and the Sednal and the Bond Place, if they would do it, think of the storyline that could run across those windows, and parents could walk with their children, and they could come up and see all the storyline that's across the buildings. Some people who have just one window, they could do a big, big idea, and the kids could kind of look at it and think, "What is that is?", "Oh, I bet that's Mama Kissin' Santa Claus", so see, it ought, we're pushing it to be a Christmas for children this year, the parents to bring their kids on out and to see the thing. Now, the other thing, you received an invitation this evening to attend an event, it is by invitation only, we have hired two new people, I asked you at one time to consider visiting our meeting, young lady who's at the Welcome Center now, she's the Director of Tourism, her name is Margot, and you could drop by and see her, she's going to be at that event that you've got the invitation to, plus the new lady who will be the CEO and the President of the Alliance for Dade, which is your Chamber of Commerce, she will be there, and you will get to meet her, get to talk, and I hope that you will find a thread of enthusiasm as you meet her and as she talks to you, and you see that this is what we're promising you for the future. Do you have any questions, anything you would like to comment on?
Appreciate the work.
Well, thank you, Alex, we certainly do, that's it.
Well, I have one more appearance I'd like to introduce someone to that, Ms. Lydia Burgler.
Lydia Burgler, yes.
She is the new editor of Dade County Sednal, so anything you'd like to say or tell us, or?
Yeah, just that I'm excited, I've officially lived in Trenton for four years now, and then I went to Southern College before that, so I've been in Dade County for eight years now, and I've loved it, I've loved every single one of it and everything about it, so I'm thrilled to be joining the Sednal. It was kind of, honestly, a little bit of an idea even years ago, like, "I wonder if I've ever worked with a local newspaper", and then the opportunity came up, so feel free to introduce yourself to me many times, I'm trying to memorize everyone's names and roles, and Carrie Anson has been very helpful, but I'm sure I'll forget several times.
Yeah, Carrie's gonna be here to have the introducer, well, they've been church together with Hutch, Barney, and their group there, and sort of glad you're here, and come see. All right, No Legal Matters, Noah, any unfinished business, Commissioner, can they bring up?
Well, I'd like to tell about a little movie.
Okay, yes ma'am.
Okay, if you haven't seen an ad about the Free puppies movie, I want to bring that up to you, this movie was filmed, seventy-five to eighty percent of it was filmed here in Dade County, and what this movie, it's a documentary, it's a professional documentary, it's actually being shown in theaters across the country, you can believe that, it really is, and it's been reviewed by the New York Times, it's been reviewed by the Washington Post, Rotten Tomatoes, and it's all, it's had really good reviews, the New York Times said it was noteworthy film of the summer. And what this, what this film is, is it, it focuses on the problem with animals over population in the south versus the north, I guess you could say, and the different things that some people are doing to combat that problem. There's several people right here in Dade County that are in this movie, so you'll notice the places, you'll notice the faces, and listen, your very own Lauren Page is in this movie.
I passed the resub, I have that.
He's got, he's got a few, a few scenes in this movie, and so... Editor is actually flying in for this, because the deal was this, you know, it was a documentary, so there wasn't a lot of money involved, I mean, well, there was no money involved for the people that they followed around and interviewed and stuff, and so, but they said that if a lot of us would participate, that in the end, it's nothing to help with our community, in our community, to do with animals, because they knew we didn't have a shelter, and so as of this Saturday night, we are showing the movie at the high school in the auditorium, because they have a big screen, and we chose the high school because if we go to a theater, and we have to pay all these taxes and fees and all that, and so we wanted to be as cheap as it could be, and we wanted to make as much money as we could. And so it's this Saturday at the high school, we're gonna open the doors at five-thirty for freshman's and asylum auction, with the movie starting at seven, it lasts seventy minutes, and every dime of this will go to spay and neuter of local pets here, it could be people that just can't afford to have their pets done, it could be like the animals we took out of the shelter, but every dime of it will go to that, so I'm just saying, y'all, this is a great community thing, like I said, it's filmed here in Dade County, so y'all come support it, and we've had a few generous sponsors of the movie, and so as far as the employees of the city, you will receive two free tickets to you Friday with your check, and I hope that you'll find time to come and support this cause. It's called Free Puppies. Okay, that's it.
Any citizens' participation ordered, Commissioner? Yes, ma'am.
The mural has already been referenced, but, and I sincerely appreciate the comments that were made, if I could just briefly elaborate, I just wanna make sure, this is the view from Main Street, so this is what you now see when you park at that parking lot at the city park, but it also wraps around a building, so this is the southern-facing wall, and I just wanna make sure that folks are aware that if you actually get out of your car and you walk the pedestrian trail around the corner, that there is more to see. Also, our beloved, incredibly talented graphic designer, local artist, Heidi Wilson has designed some souvenirs of the project, they include thumbnail images of the mural itself, and then the phrase "I support public art" as well as information about it, including the artist and the location, so have these for y'all, and also for everyone who contributed or supported the project throughout its duration.
This is Heidi, that was the teacher of the house.
Yes, ma'am. And I really do appreciate the city and letting me speak and allowing this public artwork to be sold.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? I will go to the new business items considered for the workshop, approval of the agenda, approval of the previous meeting minutes, and also our special budget workshop in minutes. Also, the squash capital improvement for fifteen, twenty thousand dollars, but we get the file quotes in for updated lights throughout the city on the streets. One surplus vehicle, a police department surplus, it moved to go deals for the highest bids, and we're gonna give a nod for the Blue Line Solutions readers for that, okay, approval, we're signed on the contract, Blue Line Solutions for our school phone on one thirty-six east. Anything else, Commissioner, please, on the head? Take a motion on items, is red, to approve the new business.
I'm ready, Paul.
Motion, Commissioner Powell.
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Wood. Any discussion? All favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. No executive session, so before we adjourn tonight, one of the things that me and you had talked about is our Trick or Treat Alley, starting Saturday, five to seven-thirty, there'll be a lot of kiddos out on the square and times, and again, I'm pretty sure Monday night, the thirty-first, is Halloween, I know a lot of churches are doing trunk-or-treat, we just ask that everyone be careful and courteous and look for little ones, be a very busy weekend with that and the nights, and this, next week, we're also getting into a lot of freezing temperatures, it's also a time, first-time heaters are coming out and things like that, as another volunteer thing that I do as fireman, and we've seen a few of these this year, but please be careful and remind everybody to watch your safety tips as you're warming your homes and stuff, and remind all public safety, our folks, to bring an extra coat or two, as it's cold. But that's just another thing to remind everybody to be careful, have a great holiday, you know, what season, everybody's back in November. Commissioners, anything else we forgot? If not, I'll take a motion for adjournment.
Oh, the motion adjourned?
Ms. Wood. Second, Commissioner Powell, alerted by Commissioner House. All favor say aye.
Aye.
I'll go there, thank you all for attending.
So Trick or Treat Alley is the twenty-second.